I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for December fourteenth, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Chelka?
Here.
Bailey?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
Still moved? Second?
They're moved in second at all? In favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, the agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda?
If I could, I'm Rob Soder, I'm on the agenda. I got a call from Seth and he gave me an agreement on our building permit issue, so can you take it off again?
Okay, if that's what... All right. Well, thank you very much. Maybe Seth can update us, or at future times, someone can update us on what was agreed to.
Okay.
Thank you. So it is amended. Item two, public comments. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on public comments? All right, we'll go on to our presentation today with UCC legislative priorities for 2024, presented by Larry Murphy and possibly Gary Grant joining us, or just you today, Larry? Good morning.
Just good morning, and thank you for giving us a few minutes of updates on the Urban County Coalition 2024 priorities. Gary is doing part of the due diligence that we lobbyists do. He had a doctor's appointment, getting the various shots that we get to as best we can, protect ourselves against all the viruses that all 150 legislators and lobbyists bring in from all over the state of Iowa mixed together for a couple of months. So anyway, yeah, on the Urban County Coalition, the new priorities, very similar to what we've had in the past. I'll do a couple of highlights, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you all have. Again, one of our top priorities is Senator Dawson in the Senate has pushed this local option sales tax scoop, where they would, in essence, institute a statewide sales tax that would actually be that, and that would trigger the land legacy fund. And then, but the, you know, the term where they talk about it being revenue neutral is not accurate. The reality is there's 27 entities or jurisdictions in Iowa that do not have a sales tax, and so this would be a tax increase. But more importantly is that the idea that all this money would be collected by the state and then allocated back to the local governments after they take out the 3A for the land legacy. Legislature's promise of backfill, which I think you all are familiar with, is spotty at best, and certainly, we've watched, you know, whether it was machinery equipment back in the 1980s, it certainly fast forward to the backfill for the industrial commercial property tax break a few years back where that got phased out. Their history on backfill is really about a two-year promise because every general assembly or every election, you have new people come in, and they did not make that promise, and so you suddenly start bucking uphill. So anyway, that's one of the top priorities there. The other piece, there's probably two parts to it that draw your attention to is on the mental health section. Or, I'm sorry, let me digress for a second. Along with the local option sales tax piece, the other piece we're paying attention to because every indication is there's at least some feeling among legislators, they have quote-unquote "not finished" with the dealing with property taxes. And so what we're hearing is there will be some activity on that. And the add-on that we've got in the priorities is that any discussion about property tax definitely should include all of the property tax taxing jurisdictions as opposed to just cities and counties. You all have taken it pretty hard this last year with legislation that's been passed, and how it's impacted you in terms of your levies and limitations, that type of thing. And so we added in that discussion should include all the tax jurisdictions. And certainly, the state right now is sitting on about 5.7 billion, and that's with a B, surplus where those monies are not encumbered at all. There's some reserves, and there's property tax or taxpayer relief fund, those types of things. But the reality is, is that there's more than enough money there that if the state wants to pick up the cost of certain property tax-funded services or education, they could. But if it's only in terms of limitation, that's going to be more of a problem for, you know, you all. On the mental health side, I think the key thing there is, and again, you all at the local level are very cognizant that when we talk about mental health, unlike probably longer history where you had some services available statewide, and the move towards the mental health, you know, the regionalization, and then more recently, the bill that was passed, Senate File 619, where the state theoretically agreed to pick up the funding for mental health. The reality is, is that, you know, you all from the folks in, you know, your county sheriffs, your jailers, certainly the community-based correction system, and certainly the state institutional system. Unfortunately, I was immediate response on most mental health pieces, our incarceration of one kind or another. And so the key thing is the state needs to maintain the schedule they promised on funding mental health, and also continue to expand access centers, that type of thing, because that's an ongoing challenge for local government. And then I just want to direct your attention to the... I think it was a couple of areas where we, you know, and we're supporting, you know, our traditional, you know, like REIT, and, you know, preserving the IFRS system and that type of, you know, funding at the state level. But I know at the local level here, you know, with the Emergency Management Agency funding, and some of the discussions has occurred between folks like you that actually do levy the taxes versus folks that don't have the levying authority, we definitely wanted to make sure that at least in terms of the federal formula, that they take the cap off so urban counties like Black Hawk County can receive more funds. And certainly, that it's an ongoing discussion at the state level about, you know, whether they expand the powers of the emergency management groups, and, or, you know, in terms of how they approach that. So those would be the ones I would at least draw your attention to. I'd be glad to answer any questions at all.
Any questions? I was going to say, are there any comments? I thought if we're in favor of this, we could put it on next week's agenda if it's supporting the issues. I forget how many weeks we worked through this, Larry. I was going to say, there were some changes for a couple of them.
Numerous changes, right. And we started working on that in, you know, the August, and worked through August and September.
I'd say one thing that is a big issue, first, I'm not sure if I'm seeing on the list, is that there was legislation last year that would have allowed for a standalone EMA levy that didn't go into our own county levying, didn't count against our own county levying ability that we could use to fund 911 services. That's a critical issue in this county.
And that's in that Emergency Management Agency funding. I was going to say, I didn't know if Larry wants to comment, but we do have in there that we would encourage the legislature to make sure that the boards cannot simply dictate levy amounts and budgets to boards of supervisors. These boards must be subject to the same oversight as other entities. I think that was added as part of it, too.
I think, but we do need to, we should be advocating for the ability to make that levy a standalone though.
Correct, because those dollars are counting against our ability to provide services otherwise.
Did you hear that? Okay, Larry's shaking his head. Any other questions or comments?
I'll ask, what are you most worried about this session?
Any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, Linda, was that directed towards me?
Yes, Chris was asking the question of you, what kinds of concerns or things you're wondering for this next session?
Well, I think, as I mentioned, the whole property tax piece appears to still be on the table. And it's a combination of playing defense on some of those issues. Certainly, one of the pieces that we did add was the, and it's more, it's nuanced, but we talk about, you know, in essence, user fees. And certainly, there's a bill that's pretty close to being passed. It's passed the House, and it was on the calendar in the Senate, it just didn't get brought up for a vote, but I believe it is a support which would affect the treasures in terms of some of the fee they charge for licensing and some of the things that they provide. And again, first time in decades that it's been updated. And the, so I think there's, you know, trying to help legislators understand that if they are concerned about property tax, creating some options for local governments to at least utilize user fees for specific services that really haven't been updated for a long time. So, but I think the property tax piece is definitely one that we're going to be watching. Certainly, Senator Dawson's, oh, local option sales tax scoop, he will again try, probably the upside to it is that there's been, oh, probably at least four years and maybe longer that he's been trying to push this idea. And I think it's, there's, he's getting a lukewarm reception, but he's promised to come back with another bill with another variation to try and get it passed. Certainly, our position as the Urban County Coalition has always been to support a sales tax that would trigger the land legacy 3A penny. We've always supported that along with REIT and some other, you know, environmental-type issues. But this proposal, because counties be so reliant on backfill coming from the state, would be, you know, is just very unworkable long-term.
Well, if we have any questions or comments, we'll follow up with you on those, Larry, and otherwise, we'll get something on the agenda in the next few weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item four, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved?
Second.
They're moved in second. Ms. Veder?
Good morning, Board. Our bill payment today is $525,043.10. And of that, the 60-40 Fund is $2,734.58. Significant invoices today. We're paying quite a bit toward the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, and also paying for most of the Sigal Cove shower facility. And those two together total about $165,000 of that amount. Everything appears to be in order. Does anybody have questions?
Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Niklas, engineer.
Morning.
All roads are in good condition. I did want to remind you this morning, although I failed to get it on this week's agenda, that we would like to invite you to a tour of the Longfellow facility today. Two of you would be more than welcome to join us. The staff is ready. It'll probably take about an hour. Right after this meeting would be great. We're flexible. We can, of course, have another tour in the spring. So I'd like to remind you of that, and just let me know if you'd like to join us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Mike Hendrickson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates on our big projects. Michelle brought up some payments to the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Our contractor there, Bruning Rock, is doing amazing. He is flying. He's had the weather. This is working out really, really well. He had eventually told us that he wanted to take care of the rest of the culvert work on, and this is the section of trail we're paving. This is phase one, the nine and a half miles of paving. He wanted to finish the culvert work, some erosion control work that he wanted to do, and he would probably wrap it up for the year. Definitely would not start with any of the asphalting, but he would get as much ready as he could. He did contact Origin, and then Origin contacted us. Because of the weather and because they're moving so quickly, he wants to start, he wanted to know if he could go ahead and start putting some of the approaches to the bridges so that he would have that ready. Each approach to the bridge will be a certain length of concrete, and they won't run asphalt right up to those bridges. And so we said, absolutely, keep going. And the weather's certainly in his favor. Second update, Casey Lake. We had our kickoff meeting with the contractor last week, and we all felt that went really, really well. We really liked the contractor. I guess we'll wait and see what kind of work he does, but we really had a great meeting with him. He has a very aggressive schedule. And so just to let you know, he's talking about starting to take the water out of the lake on November the 27th. I did talk with Al Fink yesterday. Sounds like he's giving them an indication that he'll be mobilizing before that, and he may start draining that lake a little sooner than that. And keep in mind, under DNR permitting, they can only take that lake down one foot per day. And so they will, they're talking about 30 days to have the lake drained. But otherwise, then, he's going to get going with everything else, and he did lay out a timeline for us. And obviously, it's incredibly weather-dependent. This job is so weather-dependent. Nobody wants to hear it, but a good cold, hard winter would be wonderful. It would really keep things moving. And I know everybody's going, hey, get off here. But anyway, that would help us a lot. But he's actually got a finish date of next October. He's got a lot more time than that to do that work, but he feels like he can get it done in that time, if it's a perfect scenario. But anyway, I will, as promised, I'll start here in a couple of weeks. Staff will be providing me with updates as far as photos, and I will be bringing those into you as we have significant changes at Casey Lake, because I think this is going to be a very, very interesting project. And it really once-in-a-career-type project, and so we're all kind of excited about it. And we'll keep you updated that way. Any questions at all?
Yeah, definitely. If there is particularly interesting parts happening, I'd like to come out.
Sure. Yep, and we'll kind of let you, we'll keep you updated on those things. And then again, it would be well worth a drive down there to sit up on the hill at Lakeview Lodge and watch what they're doing, because this is going to be something I've never seen before. So we're all very excited about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Michelle?
I thought I would give an update today, and you were all copied on this, but I just wanted to let you know, I've sent out all the budget preparation materials to the departments so they can get to work on things. There will be, I'll be providing more information about the schedule, particularly because of the new changes in the tax law that they've, it's just going to drag out our process next year. But we'll, I will get some information out for you, to you pretty soon on that. Working on our annual financial report, and trying to wrap up the audit, so it's, yeah, it's an intensely busy time, but we're making progress.
So have they released some of that information to help yet, or it's yet to be coming?
The budget information?
Yeah.
There's some preliminary stuff out. It's interesting, there is a document out on the city website from DOM, not on the counties yet, but at least it wasn't when I looked Friday. But we'll see if, I think there'll be more. Those instructions kind of apply to both, but hopefully, they'll come out something specifically for us soon.
Thank you. Any others in the room? Anyone on Zoom that would like to make an update? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes approved for November 7th, 2023.
So moved? Second?
Moved in second. At all in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, minutes are approved. Item seven, consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove something for discussion.
So moved?
Second?
Moved in second. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item eight, other business. This is a resolution that the bridge embargo establishing vehicle and load limits for Structure 074065 crossing Mud Creek, located on Klein Road between Eagle Road and Quarry Road on the west line of Section 15, T-87 North, R-12 West, with a load limit of three tons. One lane be approved, and that the signs be erected advising of the permissible weight, maximum weight, as recommended by Katherine Niklas, county engineer.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. I just wanted to show you a few photos of this bridge, so you know what it is you're approving here. So this is a bridge located on Klein Road between Quarry Roads and Eagle Road. This photo was taken several, about 10 years ago during bridge inspections. So you can see, it's a steel bridge, steel-beam bridge, four-span. It's about 75 feet long. This is a road looking, a view looking down Klein Road. It had been rated at 10 tons for many, many years. Recently, during bridge inspections, just in the last week, it was decided, due to just the decaying timbers, timber supporting the bridge, that we should probably downgrade it to three tons. This is a view taken, again, several years ago during routine bridge inspections. You can see that at some point, we put two steel H-pile in this, under this bent, to support the bridge here. Just a few more photos of these H-pile, or excuse me, the timber pile. You can see it's decaying at what would traditionally be the waterline. It has been fairly dry this season, of course. And then this is the decaying back wall. So in the interest of safety, we are asking that you downgrade it to three tons. There are no homes on this road, this entire mile. There are no homes on this road. This may be something that in the future, we just look at removing the bridge and possibly doing something with the road, such as a vacation, or downgrading it to a Level B road or a Level C road. But I just wanted you to be aware of what the structure looks like today, and it will be, it has already been posted yesterday for the three tons. Can I answer any questions?
You said no homes, but is there much traffic on that road, then?
So according to the most recent Department of Transportation traffic counts, it's at 10 to 15 vehicles per day. Of course, this would probably change during harvest and planting season, because of course, it's all ag land on both sides of the road.
But they have alternative routes, probably?
Yes. I haven't inquired with all of the property owners, but they're, this is just a mile to the west of US 218, as you go to La Porte. It's about two miles northwest of La Porte City. So I haven't looked at all the landowners, but perhaps some of them are adjoining landowners, or they could access their fields from the road to the east or the west of that.
And were we to do the vacation or want to do that, we'd have the hearing and contact individuals on that?
Yes, that's a whole nother issue to be discussed. According to the Code of Iowa, there are, because there are two bridges on Klein Road, one of them we are just embargoing today, we have to, the code tells us that we have to do something with those structures. We either have to remove those structures, or we have to sell those bridges. So we just, apparently, we just can't give them away. So we would have to investigate all of that yet.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more other questions, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item B is a resolution to approve participation in the Northeast Industrial Access NEPA Study administered by Intercog along with the communities of Waterloo, Evansdale, Elk Run, and Raymond, designating the chair as the official representative of the county, authorizing the chair to sign said resolution, and providing financial assistance in the amount of $60,000 as the county's local matching contribution. Funds for this study will be used for the environmental permitting and preliminary engineering for the preferred alternative.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Nick, introduce yourself.
Good morning, Board. Nick Fratsky, Director of Transportation with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments. For anybody who isn't familiar, the Northeast Industrial Access Planning Study was completed in 2019 to develop a kind of a high-level preview, basically lines on a map for alternatives to accessing the northeast industrial area. The MPO had programmed at that time $480,000 for the feasibility study and NEPA study, the environmental study. And that funding was programmed for fiscal year 2024, which we are in at this point. So at that time, studies were eligible with the STBG funding. At this point in time, that has been excluded. Now, construction is the only eligible expense for those funds, so we are kind of grandfathered. And at this point, one of our concerns would be that if we were to hang on to this funding, that would potentially need to be allocated in a different manner. So this study may not be fundable if we were to hang on to these monies for another year. So we got together as the MPO to kind of come up with a plan to hopefully evenly distribute across jurisdictions that match for that $408,000. At the time that that money was programmed for the study, it was estimated that it would be about $625,000. So we're sticking with that cost. Hopefully, not much has changed with, you know, COVID and things of that nature since those funds were programmed. But I do have, and I'm not sure if you've seen this, but we do have kind of a breakdown of the targeted contribution by each jurisdiction. I can share that with you if you'd like. See the county's contribution is there, the city of Waterloo being equal, and then it kind of graduates down by jurisdiction, size and capacity for the overall fund.
And have you met with all the communities? Are we last or first, or how?
No, so meetings have been conducted, and Kathy and Ryan have been involved in those conversations. Each community has been involved in those conversations. A couple of them are here with us. We've got Mayor Kaliska from Evansdale, and Councilwoman Becky Pint from City of Raymond. The mayor, I did speak with Mayor Smack of Elk Run, and everybody's been on board so far. So we're just, we did release an RFP for solicitation of consultants to kind of keep the process moving. So we're just really kind of trying to get our ducks in a row for, so that we are ready to act when we get down to consultant selection and interview processes. Any questions?
Any questions? Tom, any questions on your end?
No, that's good. Nope.
You bet.
Thanks very much.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Yes, please.
The $60,000 that is being asked for, we do have that budgeted for FY '24 or '25, excuse me. It's either in this year's budget, or it will be in FY '25. So we are planning to participate in the study, and actually, I believe it's in FY '24. That's why we're asking you for it. So we do have that money budgeted.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Item C, resolution that Blackhawk County accepts the Signal Cow Shower Facility project as substantially complete and authorizes the release of retainer in the amount of $5,700 to Cardinal Construction when appropriate, utilizing the American Rescue Plan funding. Same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board Supervisor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions at all? The, the restroom facility is ready and, um, uh, there's a single restroom and a single shower, but that park has never had that and, um, its usage since, uh, COVID has certainly dictated that, that it could be needed or is needed. And, um, uh, we've gotten a lot of really positive feedback with that. Now, the only thing that isn't finished is, uh, the ADA sidewalk that will go up to that and we will be doing that ourselves, um, but it's a little late to do that, so we'll do that next spring. But Cardinal has completed their work and we are, and, uh, they've done a great job, so.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mike? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Item D is a resolution. Blackhawk County accepts and approves change order number one, final for the Hickory Hills wastewater treatment facility improvements contract with Hudson Hardware Plumbing and Heating, Inc. in the amount of $2,211 as determined through quantity verifications by the project engineer and utilizing American Rescue Plan funds. Change order one, final will increase the contract dated March 14, 2023 from $705,086, or $86.10 to $707,297.10.
So moved.
And it just, project, thank you. The completion date, may, it's been moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mike, any comments?
Yeah, any, uh, this is just a, pretty normal for a contract. Um, there was just a little, when they verified quantities, um, a little more topsoil was needed than expected and, um, and that's really all this amounts to, so.
Thank you. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Item E, motion that the training request submitted by Michelle Whedon, finance director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, that was easy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carries. Item F has been removed as Mr. Saunter, Saunter, I think it's Saunter, but, um, suggested or recommended. So moving on to item nine is the canvas.
Sorry, that you mentioned at the beginning or when Mr. Saunter?
Yes.
Pulled it. Do we want Seth to just speak on it now or?
I don't know if Seth is, I have some, might have been someone else, but if you can speak on what the change is, I was going to say we certainly can, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just briefed very moderately on, on what occurred.
Well, mister, maybe we could receive an email or something like, because that would be helpful to, just know. That's what I thought we were going to wait till this item and then he was going to mention what the compromise was. But it'd be great for us to know, so if Bob or someone that worked with him would do that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. But yeah, he was, uh, working with Bob Ball, uh, one of our main inspectors and, um, they were able to, uh, find, find an agreement, uh, but still abide by the code and, uh, making it work.
Let's go.
Great. If you just, yeah, forward what that is or what the compromise was, that'd be helpful.
I, I shall.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you. You want to stay in canvas, you're welcome to, but we'll move on. This is a resolution to certify the outcome of the votes cast in the combined city and school election held Tuesday, November 7th in accordance with the Iowa code 50.24. We're going to save our motion and say.
So moved.
That's okay. Okay, Karen.
So who wants to volunteer?
Okay.
Who wants to?
Oh, well, no, you're going to have to do.
Sit with, um, Dan and I.
Oh, yeah, I'll go with Linda.
Yeah.
You go with Linda? Okay.
Okay.
What's up?
Then, all right. I'm going to sleep.
I was going to say, I know you're, you're more under the gun than I am. I have a trial this afternoon, but that's not till afternoon. And I'm prepared for it, I think.
Wow.
We'll see. A little assessor trial.
Hopefully not a big deal.
It's not a big box store in court. It's a, okay.
You okay? One? I think so.
Seven under, all depends on who wants to be lawyers. Those lawyers never be me. All right. Let me know. You're going to have to give me a quick coaching reminder of what we're doing here.
This book, uh, corresponds to this stack of precincts. So I'm just going to read you numbers that should correspond exactly with the, anything.
And start at the top and work our way through, right? All right.
Okay, so we're at, uh, Waterloo Ward 5 precinct 3, correct?
Yep.
Okay. The first time I go through, I'll, I'll give the titles and after that I'll just give the numbers.
Sounds good.
So we're just going to do the retrograde. Waterloo Ward 2 for Mayor Nathan 235, Hart 102, one right. And we're done with that. Council of Large, Simon 37, O'Nine, Chappelle 12, Ryder 76, zero right.
Call the modernization and that stuff out.
Waterloo, uh.
Two.
Okay. Where, where?
We're, we're.
Yeah. Yeah. Waterloo at Large.
Yep.
Berry 52, Mills 81.
Well, sorry.
Four, Ryder 3. And, uh, two, Cox 106, one Ryder. Sheezus 198, two, Hardini.
Shane Hardini, right.
Yep.
So if anybody wants to go.
113. Yes, 103, no, 30, 04, total of 117.
Okay.
Yep. And you, you don't have to read the last names. I'll just follow the numbers and if the number doesn't match up, I'll call it up.
You got extra tapes in here.
Uh, I got precinct five.
It was 112, 152. And then, what was 48? Ryder 121, it seems, 42. 87. Mayor, 124, 3031. I have 52 Ryder. Council of Large, 207, 10, 14. 85, 94, 85, 130.
Uh, we don't have a Ryder in there. Okay, good.
Waterloo Large, Berry 171, 1247, 241, two Ryder. Cox 43, 53. Yep. Yep. Two, four Ryder.
Two, three.
Yes, 324, no 97.
All right.
The given three. Zero.
I'd be shocked if four.
Yep.
There are them cap six.
Yeah. I know. 183.
87, 1277.
Uh, Mayor 71. All right. 5. Large, 1507. 163, 76, 83. Total 78, 239. 392, Mills 55, 157. 199. 44. 121, 61, 041.
Good.
Three, total of four. Yep. Need a fall. Four. Yep.
Ward one, precinct one, right? I'm sorry, I missed her, yeah, yep, good.
195, Peterson 6, two Ryder. Was it, you said 107? 109. Okay, gotcha. Yep. 11.
95, 28, 12.
Mike, 174, Peterson 104.
Um, I'm sorry, I had Peterson 106.
What did I say?
104. Oh, good. Oh, yeah. That was the easiest to read.
Uh, 964, Bieber 127, Bieber 125, 102.
Good.
Okay. Wait just a sec. Um, I got eagle orange.
57, 6, 11, 57, 10.
Okay.
14, 3, 30.
Mayor 438, 102, one Ryder. Okay. Large, 121, 295, 52.
135.
Okay.
102.
Uh, school district, 287, 244, 203, 47, 203, 61, 5, 232.
Yep.
008.
Uh huh. No vacancy, Lieber 389, 10 Ryder.
294. 14, 14, 21, 21.
Yep.
13, 21, 32.
Yep.
47, 35, 03, 43, 41, 76. 5, 235, 67.
Large, 288, 237. Yep. Three Ryder. 12, 43, 2, 143, 222, 53, 124, 233, 226.
Seven Ryder's? Is what I, all right, okay.
Four, four Ryder's.
Oh, I can see that.
267. Okay, Lieber 331, three Ryder's. Yes, 314, 148, 163, 170, 156. I think the 2, 38, 305, 38. Yep. 71, 124.
76, 160, 167.
He's got the harder job, I'll admit it.
I was somehow not willing to do it. Okay. I've been given. Yep, you had. Okay. This is actually. Okay. Yeah, I had two over votes under. Mayor 14, 12, Council of Large, 312. Uh, Ward 2, um. This one here. School, 88, 6, 3, 2, 8, 11, no Ryder.
Yep.
Lieber 13, no Ryder. School is at large. Uh, District 4, two Ryder.
They really showed out in this.
He doesn't. Yeah. Yes, there's some no.
All right.
And all these. All right. Hawkeye, Ford, District 8. Yep. 224, 53, Large, 124, Large. 124, 28, three Ryder's. Ward 2, 213, five Ryder's. 4, 147, 14. Yep. Okay.
One, two. Okay, good.
But it's one person that didn't vote for two. Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Let's see, 34. What's that, 30? It's coming, first number. 82, 1. 38, 35, 14.
I'm sorry, I was still out of one of those, I'm not sure. Zoomed up.
31, 0, 2, 85, 72, 2, 0.
Okay, we are in Ward 2, precinct 3. 311, 71, five Ryder's.
Wait, 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 we're in Ward what precinct 3? Is it? Okay, I had five as my next one. Or did we, or? No, I, I had five.
89, 18, 16, 53. 172, 13, 65. 136, 84. 33, 103, 31.
All right.
All right.
Mayor 450, 92, three Ryder's.
54.
Large, 124, 26. Okay. Three Ryder's.
37, 90.
263, 239, 257. 236, 268, 28.
Good.
389, two Ryder's.
Good.
189. Large.
Bunch of zeros.
Waterloo Large.
151. 12, 1.
Okay.
195, 33, 28, 18.
Uh huh.
165, 233, 62.
Resorting. Uh huh.
33, 39, 56.
That's crazy.
Yep, public measure. Yes, 422, no.
I'm not really be concerned if you say the public measure as Ryder's.
12. I'm sure there were some.
There may have been.
14, 23. Yep.
Yep, that's where we're.
Mayor 11, 71. Uh huh. 91, 176, 2 Ryder's. Okay. A lot of 401, 4 Ryder's. 0007. 112, 008, 187, 181.
Yep. 31, 42.
Yep.
259, 3 Ryder's.
51.
Knightville Hartford, no.
43.
Either race.
Yep.
Any of the three races. Hudson. 10, 5. Senior, 3. Okay, now we can. There's measure 8.
14, 14, 034.
Yes. 33, which is a 3D, which is a 43.
451, 196, 182, 200. 163, 67, 012.
Ward 3 precinct. Mayor 377, 155, one Ryder. Yep. 142, 219, 85. Three Ryder's.
Yep.
223, 00. 101, 67, 16, 30.
Yep.
61, 12.
Yep. 1. Uh huh. 37, 413.
81.
202, no 76.
610, 70, 04, 05.
I will be right back.
One, two, zero, zero, two, zero. Zero, zero, two-three. Ten, zero, zero, one.
Twenty-five, ten, zero, three.
Yep.
Four-six, first number sixty-three. Sixty-three, one-fourteen. Sixty-six, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-eight, nine. Seventy-three, twenty-five, sixty-nine, ten. Seventy-six, sixty-nine, sixty-eight, one-forty-one.
Alright.
One-twenty-six, forty, eleven.
Quarter-one.
Alright.
Ninety-six total?
Yep.
Ten, zero, zero, zero.
Yep.
Nine, five, three.
He said that nine.
Nine, five, three.
Eight-three. That might be a.
Seventeen, forty-seven, forty-three, eleven, zero. Nine, zero, 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 nine, zero, zero. Eight, four, zero.
Uh-huh.
Fourteen, two, eleven, one, zero.
Twenty-three, yeah, one-seventeen. Four.
You said fourteen, thirteen, seventeen. Yep.
Three-seven, four, one, two, three, two.
Yep. You said eleven, then one. Alright, so I have twelve for a write-in.
Four, two, eight.
Two, three, three, four.
Write-in.
One, zero.
Okay, I see. Okay. Alright. Alright, very good.
Zero, 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 zero.
Yep.
Zero. Twenty-one.
Good.
I love it.
One.
Yep.
Thirteen, one, zero, four.
Alright. Yep.
Seven, zero, seven, one.
Five, two write-in.
I do.
Three, one-one-six, four, two, you were right. One-five-two, one-two, one-three-four, two-two, one-seven, one-five, one-three-seven. Four write-ins.
Yep.
Two-three-two, two write-ins. Yes, two-one-seven, no, eighty-two.
Yes.
Ward one precinct, one.
Alright.
One-eighty-four.
One-nine, two, three, eight, one write-in.
Nine, one-nine-four.
One-zero-seven.
Alright.
One-six.
Eight-nine, seven, twelve, four, one, five, zero, one. Four, two-nine, seven-nine, one, two, three.
Twenty-nine.
Four-eight, one, three write-ins.
What's, what's happening?
Four write-ins.
Four Saturday night, we've got a bunch of stuff.
Five, four, hard time. Zero, zero, six, one, four, four, no, forty-five, zero, seventy-eight.
One-twenty-seven, forty-five, so.
Alright.
For this time of year, that's perfect. Yeah.
Ward four precinct.
Yep.
Four-two-five, one, two, two.
Thanks.
Three write-ins.
Yep.
One-two-seven, three.
It's my son.
Three write-ins.
Yep.
Two-nine, three-one-one, one write-in.
Three.
Flying down the floor. I think that'd be four, right?
This is their first.
One, zero.
My daughter Mackenzie, she's in.
Alright.
Four, oh, oh, twelve, nine, eleven.
Six-nine, zero, zero.
Twenty-two write-ins for Hawkeye.
Sixty-eight, eighty-four, seventy-three, seven, zero, six, one.
Yep.
One-twenty-one.
And my son has a Florida on December six.
Three more.
Oh, my goodness.
One-twenty-five, four. One-oh-two, fifteen.
You're falling towards three.
Alright.
My son park, park the work.
Three, four, one-two-nine, six write-ins.
Yep.
One-two-seven, two-three-eight, five-o, three write-ins.
Yep.
Two-seven-two, two-five. Zero write-ins.
Yep.
Two-five-six, two-two-seven, two-three-one, seven, two-nine.
One, one-four. Three-fifteen total. One-hundred, two-ten, one, two, four. One-four-five, five, four, nine, one, thirteen, zero.
Eight write-ins.
Yes.
One-thirty-seven, one-seven-three, one-sixty-one, five, two, three.
Alright.
Forty-eight, three, zero, six, four. Two. Two-fifty-nine, two-zero, four, two-eighteen, seventy-four, zero.
Three-two-four, seven-six-two.
Yep.
Nine-six, one-nine-three, four-oh-two.
Yep.
Two-three-six, one-seven-eight, one-eight-nine, six-one, one, two, three, one, one-nine-three, one write-in.
Seventy-four, twelve, zero, one, two. Seventy-one, one-oh-one, one, one, seven, eight, six, seven.
For the one.
Yes. Sixty.
When is the sixteen?
One. That's thirty-four. Twenty-five, seventy-eight, zero, 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 one-fifteen. One-thirty-nine, one, zero, thirty-four.
Eight-o, eight-one. Three, oh, two-four-two, eight-two, three.
Yep.
Three-oh-two, two-nine-one, two-six-oh, eight-o, two-eight-six, three-one-one, two-three-seven.
Yes.
Four-two-four, nine. Do one write. Three-nine-nine.
I'll start on one-six.
Good. Yep.
Alright, one-six, four-sixty-one.
Yep.
Total.
Washington.
One-sixty-one, two-seven, one, zero, twelve.
Alright, yeah, this one's a little.
One-thirty-three, one, one, twenty.
Okay. Alright.
Four-seven-three, zero, 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 six.
Write-in.
One-eighty-seven, two-eighteen, two-three, three-three.
Yes.
Two-sixty.
Uh, school district.
Three-thirty-two, seven, three, twelve, six, three, seventy-four, zero, six, seven.
Yep.
Three-twenty-eight, one-sixty-seven, zero.
Alright, yep.
Thank you Hartford. No votes, no votes. Jamesville, at large, Paul, General, nine, clean write-in, Pete, Jürgen, Pete.
Uh, yeah, yep, yep.
Lady Shell, Trump singer, no votes.
It's incredible.
Lady Shell, I can.
One-ten total, forty-five.
Okay, hold on just a second, okay, oh yeah, I'm still on, yep, sorry.
Zero, twenty-one, ten.
Public measure, BW.
Zero, 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 seven.
Yes.
Zero, seven.
No.
Seventy-four, three.
Yep.
Public measure, T.
Yes, twenty-seven, zero.
Yep.
Three, zero, zero, three, six, zero, zero, four, zero.
I was gonna say, it seems like I've gotten stuck with these before. No, it's kinda fun, see everybody running to the county, everything going somewhere. Including somewhere running out of county.
Yep. Cedar Falls. Six-one-three, one-four-three-four.
Seven.
Total, Cedar Falls Council.
Twenty-one, nine, four, oh, six.
Five-three, one, zero, zero.
Good.
Four, two, seventy-three. Four-four, seventy-three, one, two, zero, thirteen, seventeen, zero. Mayor, four, one, two, zero, four, five, three, one, eight, zero, one, three. Write-in, zero, down, zero, zero.
Yep.
Zero, zero, mayor.
One, two, zero.
All zeros until this.
Zero, right, house, Lewis back, one, 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 four, one. One, one-fifty-eight, three, standard, five, one-nineteen, forty-one, one-four.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Twenty-seven.
I'll bring that up. So, everybody got a vote. No write-ins.
That's right.
Yeah, we're. Twenty-two. Write-ins.
Yep.
One, two. Birdman, one, Clements.
Forty-one, three.
Ward two, four, where?
Four, zero, zero.
Three, seven, one.
Six, zero, zero, eight.
Ward four.
Yep. Yep.
Twelve, seven, seven, four, one, zero. Wards are red. Nichols seven, six, red, fifteen, eight, and seventeen, one write-in.
Yep.
Mayor, two, come on, people, Brian. Gilmoreville at large. Checkered two, even for.
We're there.
Now, yes. Three. Two write-ins.
Yep.
There was a third person.
Wasn't too careless.
It was awful.
They started out with three, three-stairs. One of those numbers.
Mayor, Lee Martin, zero. No votes for council. Ward precinct. Jamesville Council. No votes for Jessup.
I'm getting blistered, see you.
Uh, Raymond, no vote.
How about we?
Waterloo, May, Nathan, one-six-five.
Hold on just a second here. Um, I didn't hear Laporte City Council, I had that above Raymond Council.
I'm sorry. Hickman, three, Pyton, five, Carroll, three.
Yeah.
Thank you. Then Raymond, there were no votes.
Yep.
Waterloo, Nathan, one-six-five, four-six-five.
Alright.
Council at large, Simon, two-one-nine, eight-three, thirty-four, write-in.
It depends what we accomplish.
Ward two, Bowes, one-fifteen, one write-in.
Yep.
Ward four, Great Smith, ninety-two, but Ray, four, Trevani, twenty-four, no write-in.
Yep.
Cedar Falls, school. Four-six-six, two-eight-five, four-oh-nine, eight-three, two-six-four, five-four, three-six on board. Ten write-in.
Ten or, I had twelve.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, no. Leaper, five-nine-six, nine write-ins. Danbur, no votes.
Yep.
Thank you Hartford. Warner, two. Thank you Hartford, Chris Carter, two.
Yep.
Thank you Hartford, Dean Peterson, two.
Yep.
Hartford, two. Ketter, three, one write-in.
Yep.
Duckerton, no vacancy, Mark Bart, four, no write-in. Duckerton, Downs, four, no write-ins. Gladwell, Linebeck, no votes.
Yep.
Hudson, all two, full, six, Nigger, four.
Yep.
Jamesville, no votes. Jessup, Asteller, one, no votes for David and Tom Bauer.
Correct.
Union, Renzo, five.
Corey was running for something?
Union.
He's the one on the other side of me in this trial I have today.
Oh. Um, other union at large, two write-ins.
Yep.
Other union at large.
How many? How many lights do we have? It's, um, up there, I try to, best estimate will be the forty. At light range.
Shelby, Shelby, Shelby Valley.
Yep.
More patience than me.
Yep.
Waterloo.
You got a set of Goldie lights?
Three males, three.
Take them off my phone, you could go.
Yep.
Are you paying someone, Chris, to do that?
Nope, I do, I do it all, my, my brother and I do it.
It's your three, nine, two-oh-three, one write-in.
Yep. As some taste, I bought about twenty to thirty-one thousand more lights last year, two, after Christmas.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
So I've taken advantage of this nice weather, we started, nothing that's visible, you know, nothing that's turned on or.
One write-in.
Yeah, you don't even turn them on, they're piloted, kind of.
I test them, I test them.
Rewrite.
I thought, yeah, that's true.
Rewrite.
Yeah.
Jamesville, two, yes, zero, no.
Yep.
BK.
Sign this quick.
Teen, yes, nine, no.
Yep.
BW, no votes.
Well, yeah.
Yes, five.
It's interesting how they evolve after signing her.
K. One, three, yes, three-nine-five, no.
Yep.
Public measure, B, yes, zero, no, one.
Yep.
Public measure, C, yes, three.
Yep. Yep.
Public measure, C, yes, four, one, no.
There you go.
Yep.
E, yes, twenty-four, no.
Yep, and that's all I've got.
Is that what SRS tells us to do?
What's that?
Every, every now or they do the lights and different things.
We do.
Yep.
You know.
Uh. You know, we do record keeping.
I do it differently, and so, you know, hopefully somebody will. Mondays, or do it in.
You know, cigarette. That's me. We call our Christmas trees.
So I got a couple of traders saying hi here together.
You got your Fraser Firs growing up there?
No, mostly, uh.
Sweet.
Alright.
I got a bunch of white pine, I've got thousands of trees on the property. The Alsums are the nicest for Christmas trees.
You want me to mention, or you?
Of what I have.
Mm-hmm. Tell her it's, uh, free range.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah, we, cruelty-free.
Yeah. Yes, that case, these trees were raised like they were.
I heard a ridiculous part, it was in England, but they were, he would bring a potted one to you and then put it back in the ground. But if you calculate the shipping and everything, it was, it's way more environmentally friendly to grow a tree and cut it down.
Yeah.
Sure.
It's actually a pretty green industry.
For the, for Waterloo, I always try to make a really, really, really nice. You bring them back then? Yeah. But for the, uh, with the cabin. Cause I don't like to cut trees, I find a tree that's, maybe there are three of them, and they're probably one of them, so. Cause I don't like to cut two trees, I find a tree that's, maybe there are three of them, and they're probably one sort. And a tree like that, one side will be flat. But that's what I use for the cabin.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I've brought that process, deer, but the, the deer, they can't kill them, they know them.
Oh no.
Got a ton of stuff to sign, right?
Yep, that's what I'm waiting for. I did remember that part.
I think they did more, to kind of punish us. This is a poor, poor turnout, so here you go.
See, this is the whole reason Zom's, Zom's been zooming in for four years.
Alright. Do I, I sign above you, right, just on the other.
Yeah.
Actually, wait a minute, no, those are for.
Those are for, maybe.
Those are for board.
Maybe sign under the left column.
Okay. Let's, should we?
Um, these are kind of set up for supervisors, should he sign like under the left column there?
Okay.
The person who's supposed to be happy. Okay, a couple of them is all, okay, she's very.
God, there's a lot of these. Guess it's each precinct, isn't it?
It's, it's each camp.
Oh, alright. I didn't even realize that. Yeah, that would explain the name on it.
Now, this one, it's, see, it says Board of Canvassers, so I think it's okay for you to sign on that.
Alright, I will do that then. Take it that board gets appointed on the fly.
Ah, my name's somehow getting shorter.
Signatures look worse and worse.
Nope, they're going over there, over there. It's not what we need. This goes a lot faster with a nun standing over me.
I don't know if it could ever go faster. It's just like, well, I don't know. So you're gonna be hanging lights, gonna take it today, or not?
This, this early this evening, we'll get, we'll get some of it done.
Yeah.
We've been constructing new signs, we made a really nice Thanksgiving sign, I'm really proud of it.
Oh, did you?
I do the design and my brother cuts them out and then we back, it's, has fabric and then it's backlit, so it looks like a big glow.
Oh, wow. When do you start doing that, I mean, as far as getting that, all that stuff done?
Uh, we, we started the day after Halloween, as we were taking Halloween decorations down.
Wow.
But I don't start decorating the inside until very close, or right after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, yeah. I'm sure that's gotta take time too, wow. I suppose before canvassers, we should start doing that, move any reports or information for the board, so people don't think that's sticker. I sit in there thinking, we might have all kinds of important stuff, yeah.
Some people don't.
Nope. Don't wanna hear the results. Yeah, we're done.
Hey Karen. This one, I signed underneath, but I realized there's a line up there, I don't think that's probably a big deal, is it?
Nope.
Don't recognize the number.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Yep, these here, too.
You have to wait a little bit longer, just to make the pain go on. I know it, I think the signing grant took longer than the whole meeting did today.
Yeah.
You're right on that one, that's why I said, this must be the painful part of a low turnout. That's unfortunate. Great, that's fine. Hmm, that's just, yeah. You wanna sign yours later?
I knew it soon.
Yeah. Otherwise, we're, once we're done. Just ask Mr. Saunders to stay, he must have thought when he had an opportunity to go, he could just. Did you all have a phone message from, um, Tim Youngblood?
What's that?
Did you have a phone message, perhaps on your, luck on your phone, from Tim Young, Timmy Brown?
From who?
Tim Youngblood?
Yes.
Okay. I told Seth, I talked to Seth a little bit yesterday, and I said, he'd offered to be here next week, probably.
Okay.
It was resolved, so. Okay.
Is it next weekend?
It'll be December soon, but yeah. The day before holiday, now remember, you get the meeting and then we'll be off.
Before the meeting.
That's a good one. I didn't expect it to be quite so long. I don't remember us having to sign that many, do you, Chris?
No, that seems like a lot more.
Yeah, I think Karen did something funny.
Yeah.
She wanted to punish us for something, she doubled up.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to announce that there were four provisional ballots that were rejected and not counted. And also to mention that, as is required by law, there was, um, a post-election audit held in a precinct, chosen at random by the Secretary of State's office. And what day was that held? Okay, last Thursday, that was done by our precinct, uh, our absentee precinct workers, and it found the vote totals to be a perfect match, as usual, as we have always found, with all of our post-election audits.
Well, appreciate you announcing that, thank you, Grant.
I wanna thank Karen and her staff and all of our precinct workers for another fine election.
What? So we can go ahead and, would be Ellen, the information reports from the board and the chair, and we don't have to wait for the signatures?
We need to vote yet.
Yeah, we need to vote?
No, we had the resolution on the second, right?
Yep. I'm sorry, who moved?
Chris moved, that's it.
Yep.
And we can take a second, Grant, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Right.
Okay, please answer as your name is called.
Uh, it's Tom, okay. Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
I'm ten, any reports or information from the board?
I have two items, uh, the first is, I met with, uh, Mark Herbst and Lance from the Sheriff's Office on Wednesday, and we're going to, in regards to the evidence building, and we're gonna, now we're gonna meet with somebody from the Waterloo Police Department and the Cedar Falls Police Department, so we can start discussing what other options there may be. Secondly, I'm meeting tomorrow at noon with Amanda, Mike, Michelle, and Judy Flores to talk about dispatch and the potential, what it would look like as a standalone department. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything?
Sorry, Chris.
Anything for you? Okay. Motion for adjournment?
Someone?
Second.
Oh.
Move second, third. All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Please adjourn.